So, good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth. This time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to this grand experiment in democracy. Thank you for your participation. With that, I will need us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider your public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Please be seated, everyone. Entertained motion for adoption. The agenda, I understand, Council Vice Chair Goldman has some amendments.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move that we move items ten A and ten C to immediately after public comment. So that would be the confirmation of Judge Grant and the Johnson Group.
It's been moved to adopt the agenda. Oh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved. And seconded to adopt the agenda with moving items ten A and ten C to immediately after public comments. Are there any questions, concerns? Are there none of those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, make sure I get everybody online. Eleanor, are you with us? Administrator Saunders. Okay, well, we have those present. It passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that very much. And moving on, we're going to start with public comments. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. Council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. Chief Arden. Thank you, sir. Cheers. Appreciate it. We have no one signed up for public comment in the chambers. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Okay, with that, we will be closing public comment. Thank you, everyone. And... All right, and we're moving on to proclamations. Well, I'm sorry. Oh, immediately after. Items ten A and ten C. Resolution... Is Judge... We need to check here. Make sure we might have to... Okay. Ordinances and resolutions for action. A resolution twenty-five-two-zero-three-eight confirming Jennifer Johnson Grant as the municipal judge and adopting amendment number one to the employment agreement dated December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So... Administrator Hill.
Thank you. Well, I should... So, as the mayor stated back in November twenty-one, the mayor appointed and city council attorney Jennifer Johnson Grant as City of Lake Forest Park Municipal Judge. And before you tonight, it's a... It's to renew one Judge Grant for a second four-year term, amend the employment contract between the judge and the city. Tell us the man who should put it in the packet as two items, like Article One, when he said the term be agreed.
Administrator Hill, apology. There we go.
It didn't come on automatically.
Ashton, can you hear us now? Councilmember McCarthy.
Now, we're doing it. Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Didn't come on automatically. Thank you for getting the heads up.
I will back up. Just quickly, back in November twenty-twenty-one, Mayor and Council appointed Jennifer Johnson Grant as municipal court judge. We're at the end, coming up on the end of that four-year contract. And before you tonight is a resolution that would confirm the reappointment of Judge Grant for a second four-year term. The changes that you'll see to the contract through Amendment One, Article One would extend the term for the additional four-year term. Article Three would amend the list of items that of work that the pro temp judges can complete to include up to four hours per week for in excess of the judge's thirty hours per week to address traffic camera tickets. And then Article Four increases the judge from twenty-four to thirty hours to address traffic camera tickets. These have been a large impact on not only the police staff, but the court staff and the judge. I can tell you that the four hours addition, sorry, the six hours additional for the judge would be billed to the new Traffic Safety Fund. And then Director Vaughn has done a calculation of the point one FTE increase for the pro temp judges. That equals about two hundred hours of traffic camera violations that could be heard by those pro temp judges. And that would also be billed to the Traffic Safety Fund. Now, those aren't, there's not a given dollar amount on those because we don't know how often Judge Grant would need their assistance. But that's, that's how it is budgeted, and you will see that in the mid-by adjustment as Director Vaughn brings that forward. So I would stand for any questions. Judges here to be, if this passes, for the mayor to swear her in for a second term.
So, any questions for me? Administrator Hill. Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill on ordinance twenty-five-two-zero-three-eight? No questions. I entertain a motion for adoption.
I move that we adopt resolution twenty-five-dash-twenty-thirty-eight confirming Jennifer Johnson Grant as the municipal judge and adopting amendment number one to the employment agreement dated December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-five-dash-two-zero-three-eight confirming Jennifer Johnson Grant as municipal court judge and adopting amendment one to employment agreement dated December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Are there none? All those in favor signify. I'm sorry, councilor. Good.
We're lucky to have her.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vice Chair Goldman.
As a point of order, I believe this is only our second touch, so I believe for formality, we need to waive our three-touch rule. In which case, I will move that we waive the three-touch rule regarding resolution twenty-five-twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded and thirded to waive the three-touch rule regarding resolution Any questions on waiving the three-touch rule? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Guys have it to waive the three-touch rule on resolution twenty-five-two-zero-three-eight. Main motion, main motion is at hand. We're ping-ponging around here a little bit. I apologize. Any other questions or comments on adoption of resolution twenty-five-two-zero-three-eight? All those in favor of adoption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Guys have it. It passes unanimously. Congratulations, Judge Grant. You're looking pensive, Steph. Are we okay?
Yes.
Okay. Just make sure procedurally. I do have exactly what I need. Thank you. Well, congratulations, Judge Grant, so far. We'll get, we'll get through this.
Let's see.
I usually do this part.
Oh, I did? Got my, my grace here. So, please raise right hand. Ayes?
Aye, Jennifer Johnson Grant.
Having been duly appointed, appointed as municipal court judge for the City of Lake Forest Park.
Having been duly appointed municipal court judge for the City of Lake Forest Park.
Washington.
Washington.
Bad words. Apologies, folks. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain the ordinances.
That I will support and maintain the ordinances.
Of the City of Lake Forest Park.
Of the City of Lake Forest Park.
And the laws and constitution of the State of Washington.
And the laws and the constitution of the State of Washington.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations, Judge Grant. Appreciate yourself.
I'm so used to just doing the swearing in and leaving. Well, I, I am so happy and just really feel humbled that you are renewing my contract. I've had a really amazing four years. I have to say, it's been challenging and rewarding in many ways harder than I ever thought it would be, but also feel like it's been a fantastic four years. I don't do this alone. I think the court does really good work, and it's because I have a really strong team and I'm lucky to have an amazing court administrator. Julie Espinoza is just my right hand, and I just am so happy to have her. So I just look forward to the next four years and trying to keep up with the workload and making sure that we represent the citizens and make Lake Forest Park proud. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge Grant. Congratulations again.
Yeah. Right. Okay, let's see. Item C, resolution twenty-five-dash-two-zero-four-zero authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, excuse me, for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven federal legislative advocacy services with the Johnson Group. Administrator Hill?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and we do have Jake Johnson here from the Johnson Group to address council, answer any questions, look into the crystal ball of the future of the federal government. So he's going to do it all for you tonight. I think we're somewhere over ten years now contracting with Jake to provide federal services, legislative services for us, lobbying at the federal level, working with our representatives and our congresspeople to bring forward not only the needs of Lake Forest Park, but across the region and the North End. Had some great experiences with him, working with the City of Shoreline and the Army Corps of Engineers of around two-hundred-and-fifth on a drainage issue that we have between the two cities. We worked with him on the medium-sized city set-aside at the federal level for transportation dollars. While we didn't end up exactly with the population top end that we wanted, I think it's ended up somewhere around two-hundred-thousand population. It did take a lot of the smaller cities out of that same bucket as the Seattle's and the Los Angeles's and the Chicago's and actually several cities. And Jake can addresses more fully within the City of Washington, actually for the first time received dollars through those. So with an upcoming new transportation bill that hopefully gets funded at positive levels, that, that is an opportunity for us as we look into the future and potentially have larger transportation needs. I said in the report that the administration has negotiated a contract with the Johnson Group. I wouldn't say it was much of a negotiation. Mr. Johnson is, has put forward that he is willing to continue his services at the same level of pay as last year. He really wants to bring a win to the city. We had the small win up north. We've had a larger win with the city set-aside, but we currently have dollars in the federal budget, and they are still there for the lakefront park. And so this contract would renew at the same of three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars per month plus expenses or forty-seven thousand one hundred dollars per year. So same as the last contract. This is, as with the last one, your second touch, so you would need to suspend the third touch rule, three-touch rule. But this is an ongoing contract we've done for many years. So I will stand for any questions, and Jake is here to address the council as well. So, thank you.
And a quick point of data point to Mr. Johnson was essential in getting us securing funding for the massive project that we did here on five-twenty-two. Goodness, that's been a decade ago. Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill before we move forward? Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Hi, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for representing our city so well. One question I had was, at one point last year, we had lobbied our three legislators at the federal level for about two million dollars for the lakefront park. That was going to be in the twenty-twenty-five transportation budget for, of the Senate's. Is that now rolling over, or do we have to go relobby the folks for that kind of funding?
Thank you, council member, and thank you to all of you to be before you tonight. It's really a pleasure to continue to work with the city, and it really means a lot to me to have this relationship. Yeah, council member, if I can answer your question directly, but then also use that as a springboard, maybe to give a quick update on some other work that we're doing at the same time. I will roll through this fast and take any questions that you have. I'm very intimidated by the city administrator saying that I have a crystal ball because that is a frightening concept when you're looking at the federal government at this point in time. But let's start with your question about the lakefront community center. So exactly as you indicated, last year, we had two million dollars included in one of the transport, one of the appropriations bills for the City of Lake Forest Park. At the end of the year, when Congress made the decision to do a continuing resolution for all of the FY twenty-five budget, every single earmarked project across the country fell out. So we were, we were a victim of that process last year. This year, in calendar year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-six, we resubmitted that project with the support of the delegation, and I'm pleased to report that right now in the House passed Transportation and Housing Appropriations Bill, there's two million dollars set aside for the City of Lake Forest Park. So we're in there, council member. We still requires Congress to pass a budget, which, though the Constitution requires them to do so, remains a challenge. That is kind of the impediment in, in front of us, but I'm hopeful that we will, we will, as the city administrator says, carry this one across the finish line this year. I'll take questions on that, and then maybe go, give an update on a few other issues that I think are of important to the city.
Any questions on topic, or we can let Mr. Johnson have free read? Please, Jake.
Great. The city administrator also talked a little bit about the medium-sized city set-aside. And while this is the most boring name for a policy initiative that we could possibly come up with, it's of critical importance, and the city's really been on the forefront of this fight. I'd love to tell you where we're at and where I think we're going. This is into crystal ball territory here. So there is, there are these federal infrastructure programs, and generally speaking, they, all cities compete in the same bucket for discretionary grants held by the federal administration. So one of the most important infrastructure grant programs, it's called the RACE Grant or the Build Grant or the Tiger Grant. It's had various names as it's kind of grown up throughout the years. And it is the single greatest source of flexible infrastructure dollars for cities. And when the program was created in two thousand and nine, up until two thousand and twenty, not a single community in Washington State below a hundred thousand in population size had won a RACE grant despite competing for them. And one of the reasons is that one of the metrics for scoring the grant is how many people are impacted by the project. And the reality is that the City of Lake Forest Park simply doesn't have the population size to score favorably in that dynamic with other communities of similar, even though our issues are exactly the same. The challenges that we have with transit, with development, with the road, with not, with non-motorized, you know, connections to our infrastructure, all of those are eligible uses for this pot of money, but we don't really feel like it's a viable source of funding for us. So in partnership with other cities, we've been working for years to try to change that criteria so that we take a piece of this federal grant funding, and we make sure that we're competing with other like cities. We made that change in twenty-twenty-one in what's known as the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And the result was that half of all grant awards were set aside for communities of two-hundred-thousand and below. And that doesn't sound like it's a lot. There's only three communities in Washington State above that threshold. But what it did was it created a viable strategy for cities like us to actually access these dollars. And since twenty-twenty-one, there have been thirteen projects funded in the State of Washington for communities under a hundred thousand, including Bothell, including Woodenville, including Shoreline, including Linwood, Mount Vernon, Lakewood. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a whole host of communities that are dealing with the same challenges that we are. So the next plan is that this bill is up for reauthorization next year. And the ask of our delegation has been to extend this set-aside, not just to the RACE Grant program, but to all of the discretionary grant programs that are under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we have, through the city's leadership and in partnership with your neighbors kind of in the region, we have the, we have, we have the entire delegation on board with this ask on a bipartisan and a bicameral basis. So both senators, Senators Cantwell is the ranking member of the, of the committee that has jurisdiction over this bill. Congressman Larson from Washington State is the top Democrat on the House Committee that has jurisdiction over this. And we are crossing all the bones to, to hope that we can continue to make progress in this effort. So that's good news, but it's also aspirational because it leads directly into the crystal ball thing that's, I think, a little disturbing and frightening for all of us, which is that the current administration in Congress are actively utilizing federal grants. Weaponizing is maybe too strong of a word, but they are actively looking at ways to use the federal budget under the control of the executive branch to implement policy obligations on federal grant recipients. That is happening now. Funds have been rescinded from a lot of your neighbor cities that, that are, you know, subject to complying with these new executive orders. And where this issue is federally is currently being adjudicated. And the outcome of this decision, which will essentially determine, does the legislative branch have control over federal spending, or does the executive branch have the ability to impugn, you know, legislative budgets with their own policy agendas? That fundamental question is before the courts right now, even right here in Washington State in a King County versus Turner decision, which is really at the, at the forefront of one of these, these cases. That is something that we're following very, very closely because a lot of our federal efforts that rely on federal grant funding, we would like to see dictated by the legislative branch, branch and not kind of up to the vagrancies of a political administration. So that is something we are deeply concerned about right now, fighting very hard to follow and to see what type of actions the administration is taking over the use of federal funds at this time. So when I look into the crystal ball, that's the, that's the dark corner of the crystal ball from my, from my point of view. I think last on my side is just, please know that the federal budget remains a viable tool for us to seek federal partnerships in. The budget, when, when Congress opened up, what, twenty-four hours ago, forty-eight hours ago, the three appropriations bills were enacted as a part of that reopening of the government. And in those three bills, there were earmarked projects for entities in Washington State, and those projects came from both Democrats and Republicans. So despite the effort to create a lot of political pressure and a lot of gamesmanship between the parties about how federal funds will be administered, from a legislative branch standpoint, there's still an opportunity for us to compete. I'll take questions. That was a lot of doomsaying, a little bit of hope, and it's pretty much how I live my life these days.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmembers, any questions for, for Jake Johnson? Okay, Councilmember Riddle?
Not a question, but just thank you for the work you're doing. Thank you for committing to this community to bring us a win, and I appreciate that very much. I'm looking forward to it this year.
Yeah. Colleagues. Just very quickly, before we move on, I've mentioned this before. I met Jake, I believe, twelve years ago at a Starbucks and this twelve, thirteen years ago, we had a meeting and sat down and talked about Lake Ballenger Forum and a bunch of different topics and had the pleasure of traveling with him to Washington DC and see the efficacy of his efforts on our behalf. And he is a master at navigating us through, through that, sometimes friendly environment, sometimes very unfriendly environment. At the best, it's, it's, it's challenging, and it is definitely, his expertise is something that we really rely upon, and we do thank him for that. So...
Mayor, I forgot to say one thing. May I, may I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
I appreciate the comments about my expertise, but my expertise is useless without quality clients and quality projects to bring forward. The Lakefront Community Center project is the highest-funded project in, for, for a Washington State Democrat in the Transportation Hut Bill. It is a priority of both of your senators and your member of Congress who have, who keep coming out to this community and want to make sure, Congresswoman Giappal's been, been just an asset for us, does not want to be perceived as the Congresswoman from Seattle, wants to make sure that she is representing all of the communities in her district, and she's been a steadfast advocate on this. Senator Cantwell's office, Senator Murray's office have both echoed that support. You've brought a fantastic community project forward to the delegation. They tried to help you last year. They're continuing to try to help you this year. Everybody's on board to help you land this plane.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And on point, Congresswoman Giappal came out and visited us for a number of hours last year and toured the lakefront site and is enormously supportive of the project because I know Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray's, Murray's as well. So, any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, thank you, Jay. We'll move on to the main question of the hand, colleagues. I entertain, entertain a motion to suspend the three-touch rule regarding resolution twenty-five-two-zero-four-zero authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven federal legislative advocacy, advocacy services with the Johnson Group.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of suspending the three-touch rule, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Guys have it. Passed unanimously to suspend the three-touch rule regarding twenty-five-two-zero-four-zero. I maintain a motion on adoption of resolution twenty-five-two-zero-four-zero with this suspension of three-touch rule.
I move resolution twenty-five-two-zero-four-zero authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven federal legislative advocacy services with the Johnson Group.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty, twenty-five-dash-two-zero-four-zero authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven federal legislative advocacy services with the Johnson Group. Any further comments? Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Guys have it. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate your service. Thank you, colleagues. Right, going back to the top of our agenda here. Moving on to proclamations. Recognizing November twenty-twenty-five as the month of Movember. Whereas the global charity Movember Foundation's vision, vision is to have an everlasting impact on the face of men's health, and whereas the Movember community of over five million men and women have raised over one-point-three billion, funding over one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty programs in twenty countries, this move, this work is saving and improving the lives of men affected by prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health problems. And whereas men are dying on average four-point-five years earlier than women, largely for preventable reasons. And whereas one in eight men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime, the treatment options for prostate cancer, cancer vary depending on man's age, stage, and grade of cancer, as well as other existing medical conditions. And whereas testicular cancer is the most common cancer in males between the ages of fifteen and thirty-four. And whereas one in five adults in the US will experience a mental health problem in any given year, roughly one hundred men in the US die by suicide every day. And across the world, one man dies by suicide every minute of every day, with males accounting for sixty-nine percent of all suicide. And whereas moving can reduce, reduce your risk of heart disease, diabetes, and cancer by up to fifty percent and lower your risk of early death by up to thirty percent. And whereas Lake Forest Park joins communities across our nation to challenge men to grow and women to support a mustache or make a commitment to get active and move, both of which spark conversations and raise vital funds and awareness for men's health. Now, therefore, the mayor and the city, city council of the City of Lake Forest Park do, do hereby proclaim November twenty-twenty-five as the month of Movember and urge all members of our community to join in recognizing this significant occasion and join the movement to change the face of men's health. Sign this thirteen-day of November twenty-twenty-five. Important thing to recognize and remember. And with that, we're moving on to a presentation by King County Parks. Your friends with us?
Yes, we have Brianna, Phelia, and Max Buchanan from King County Parks.
Brianna and Max, welcome. Can you hear us okay?
Can you hear you great? How about, can you hear us okay?
You bet. Well, let you guys tee it up. You have the floor.
Great, thank you. Go ahead and start sharing my screen. Give me just a moment.
Go ahead and start sharing my screen. Give me just a moment.
There we go. Perfect. We can see that. Where you're on presentation mode for a second. There you might want to.
Okay, let's let's give that another shot. One second. Okay, how does that look now?
There we go. Perfect.
Awesome. Okay. All right, well, give us a chance to just introduce ourselves really quick. So my name is Brianna Selaya. I am an engineer and project manager with King County Parks. And I've had the pleasure to work on the Burke Gilman Trail Asset Improvement Projects in Lake Forest Park.
My name is Max Buchanan. I'm the Regional Trails Coordinator for King County Parks, so I anything regional trail related that isn't engineering or actually building trail usually comes towards me. I've been with the county for almost three years. Thanks for having us this evening.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, and thank you all for having us. It's been really great to work with the city on this project and really get this project to construction. So it's been in construction for the past month and we're about to wrap up later this month. So I've been really excited to work on this and have this collaborative effort with the city. And it's been really nice to work with you all and I'm excited to share with you some details. So this project is primarily sorry, it primarily includes intersections with the trail and roadway crossings. And within our scope, we included bollard removals, sign installations, and pavement markings. So here's a map of where you see the majority of our improvements along the trail in Lake Forest Park. And you might have seen this map before. It was included on the trail closure notice signs posted a month ago during construction. And the Burke Gilman Trail sees, so we have seen pedestrians, cyclists, and more increasingly e-bike usage along the trail. So the scope of this project included trail traffic calming features like stop site distance increases on the use of warning bands and centerline pavement markings. Specifically at the intersection Northeast 165th Street, we also included a high visibility LED yield sign used on the approaches of the intersection where we knew that this roadway was really busy because of the increased traffic with the Sheridan Beach Club. And one of my favorite parts of engineering and design work is really the before and after photos. So I think this really helps tell the story of the improvements that we're making here. On the left, we have our before photos. This is going to be at Northeast 147th Street. So we have some centerline, or sorry, excuse me, some center bollards, shoulder bollards. We removed those in order to increase pathway openness and trail user safety. And then also we have installed some ADA detectable warning surfaces on the approaches going into the roadway from the trail on either side. And then completing next week is going to be the installation of those newer signs and higher visibility pavement markings. This is 165th near the, I'm sorry, oh yeah, 165th near the Sheridan Beach Club. So before we had a lot of bollards on the shoulder and we really thought that they were obstructions here. And it really posed more of a benefit to remove them instead of keeping them in place. So we decided to remove them, cleared up the pathway, and then again, at the end of next week, you'll see those LED flashing yield signs here on either side. Outside of trail traffic calming features, we also included a drainage improvement project near, or I guess within the scope of this project, near 155th phone, excuse me, 153rd Street. And this was really the results of a concerned property owner reaching out to us and letting us know that the asphalt burn that was there actually wasn't as effective as as intended. And we had some water running off the trail this section. So we increased the length of the asphalt burn here and wrapped it around a new catch basin. And I'm really happy to share that after the last atmospheric river we had post-construction, that this was actually really successful in keeping the stormwater off of the the property.
Occasionally, we will receive comments from regular trail users with questions or concerns or suggestions on how to make the the trail a safer place and more comfortable place, more welcoming place for all users. We recently got a received a comment through parksinfo@kingcounty.gov. That's a very important email address. I hope everybody has has that bookmarked or written down parksinfo@kingcounty.gov. The trail user was suggesting that there wasn't enough speed limit signage on the Burke Gilman Trail through Kenmore and Lake Forest Park. So we did an analysis of where existing speed limit signage or other regulatory signage was located. And as part of the Burke Gilman Trail Asset Improvement Project, we've rolled in some some new signage placement so that there aren't any sort of dead zones between speed limit signs. We want to communicate to all users that regardless of what type of bicycle you're on, the speed limit is 15 miles per hour. So those will be going in on the trail as well. Looks like we've got about six six new signs going in, four of them in Lake Forest Park. So that's a brief overview of the of the project and some of the other things that we're doing and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Max and Brianna. We sincerely appreciate the parks, the park, King County Parks working with us. It's been very constructive and and positive relationship. We do appreciate it. Colleagues, questions for Max or Brianna? Councilor Lebo.
Thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions, one from cyclists and the other one from pedestrians and persons who are crossing the trail. At Northeast 170th, is there an opportunity to move the walk signal post that tends to be in the sort of path of bicyclist and pedestrians there right across from Starbucks? So that's one question. Is there an opportunity to fix that situation, which it's right in the sort of desire line for bicyclist?
Sorry, I'm going to I want to make sure that I'm getting the location. You said 170th?
Right, I believe it's 170th across from Starbucks.
Yeah, I do remember looking at that location. So what we have out there right now is what's called a fog line, so where you see this yellow this yellow centerline marking here. We kind of use a white fog line where we and it's it's to mark and guide pedestrians and trail users around any obstructions or to keep them like on a specific path that we want. So this project also included the use of that line around the the post there at that intersection.
So the solution is we painted a stripe on the pavement?
For the scope of this project, yes.
So there's not an opportunity to move that post?
I'm not sure right now, but we can definitely ask about it and look into it.
Yeah, and then.
Councilor, Deputy Raffertani, you had his, you had your hand up first?
Oh, I thought I thought Councilor Lebo had a second point.
You have, I'm sorry. Did, okay, please.
Thank you. The other one is at the intersection of 165th in terms of sightlines for cars moving through that intersection. Is there an opportunity that I've heard from several folks down there that that intersection is quite challenging for people who are driving through that intersection because of sightlines and speed and the distance across that intersection?
I think that's, yeah, go ahead, Bree.
165th was an intersection that we definitely took a closer look at with the city. So we have worked with the city's traffic consultants also on this intersection. We had proposed like a few different alternatives to this one. One of them included like a roadway mounted sign to let people know that there's that there's a crossing ahead. Something that is also going to be included on this one is going to be increased visibility of the crosswalk itself. So right now, there's just like plain concrete out there in the ground. What we're doing is adding additional white thermoplastic markings across to increase visibility that to show there's a difference in like the pavement versus like a trail crossing. That LED sign was a request specifically, I believe, from the city or maybe the consultants to use a higher visibility yield sign for trail users so that they know that the that that intersection or that crossing is there and to warn them to slow down.
So was there an opportunity to look at the sightlines that persons who are driving up to that intersection would be able to clearly see pedestrians and bicyclists?
Oh, excuse me, sightlines. I'm from the roadway. I don't I don't know that we did a study specifically on that, that intersection, but I can add that to our list of things to look into as well.
I understand that the Sheridan Beach Club has sort of can provide some feedback for that intersection. Representatives from the Sheridan Beach Club, and so they would be a good group to look, reach out to.
Got it.
Thank you.
See Deputy Raffertani, I can't see on the screen. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thanks. And and thank you, both Mr. Buchanan and Ms. Selaya. The work you've done on that trail so far, your team has done on the trail, it's been nothing short of remarkable. I like the bollards being gone, makes it a lot more open inviting. I also like the striping as well, so thank you. One question I wanted to, or two, two points I wanted to make. One was to clarify, I support what Councilmember Lebo said about the intersection at 170th. The context is that if you get off the bus going northbound on Bothell Way, your walk line to that push button thing puts you right in the path of oncoming bicycles. So it really is a collision, collision hazard there. So if anything you can do to separate those two flows of traffic would be great. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, and this may not be your purview, but I noticed that at the Seattle border, there's a perfectly great Welcome to the City of Lake Forest Park sign. Southbound from Kenmore, though, there isn't. And is there a way that we could get one installed there?
We can certainly look into that. I'm not sure who placed the 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 sign that is there. So that's something that we can look at on our end, whether or not it's one of our signs or if that was placed by the city and we can get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. And I feel like I'm piling on a bit, but I wanted to echo Councilmember Lebo about 170th Street. From the pedestrian perspective, I've nearly been hit by bicycles. I've had, bicyclists have had to swerve around me when I'm getting off the bus, trying to reach the crosswalk signal. And part of the challenge is it's a trail design issue that there's the path that is painted to guide bicyclists, but there's the physical path that feels natural for someone who is cycling on the trail. And most nearly universally, the bicyclists follow the path that feels physically natural to them. And that is the one that puts them directly in the path of pedestrians trying to get to a crosswalk button. So it really either needs to be moving the crosswalk pole or adjusting the line of attack of the Burke Gilman so that it doesn't feel natural to go into the pedestrian zone.
Okay. We are hearing about, we are hearing that loud and clear, 170th. We need to take a closer look at that.
Yeah, hey, Councilor Riddle.
About 170th, no, I'm joking. So when you, did you guys, just a confirmation, when you were looking at the speed limit sign locations and did you validate that the existing speed limit signs were in fact there? Or is this just coming from your records of where they were once placed?
Bree, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah, this is coming from inventory records.
I would recommend a quick look see to see if they're still there. Just since you're trying to, you know, make sure that there's adequate coverage, it'd be useful while you're still on the project. And then the next piece is there's a lot going on when you're walking and biking on the Burke Gilman, and sometimes your brain just doesn't see those signs. They're off to the side. They're near, you know, vegetation. Could we look at what it would look like to paint on this, on the Burke Gilman itself, speed limit 15? That'll be much more visible for individuals, especially those on e-bikes.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we can look to, especially because we've, we've added a lot of pavement markings for this project.
That'd be greatly appreciated.
We've heard, I've heard that suggestion before too, not from Lake Forest Park, but from other other King County residents. So we will look into that as an option.
That's where we're good.
I do appreciate the the speed limit signs going up in whatever way they go up, whether it's painted on the ground or a sign. But who's responsible for enforcing the speed limit? Because I walk down that trail quite a bit and every time I walk, there's someone that's really exceeding 15 miles per hour. So maybe we put a traffic cam.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So King County Parks is not a law enforcement agency. We would need to partner with the King County Sheriff's Office to actually do enforcement, which is something that we are talking about internally doing in the future. For the time being, I want to stress two things. One is if you see any sort of crime being committed on the trail, please call 911 first and foremost. For things like speeding areas where either there's not enough speed limit signage or there's too much perceived speeding or congested areas where we don't have signage telling people to slow down, things like that. I would love it if people would report that to parksinfo@kingcounty.gov. That's how we track comments coming from the public and it allows us to know where to go out and look for things. And as, you know, if we get more than one comment, we need to look at it. So please, please do that. As far as enforcement, like I said, King County Sheriff's Office would be our best bet.
Colleagues, any other questions? Well, we sincerely appreciate the improvements. I I think the the 170th question is fascinating because that's been discussed now since 2010, that where that that the light the pedestrian signal is for crossing, and it's been a perennial problem unfortunately for everyone. And I think the other factor facing everyone is going to be enforcement of speeds because of the advent of new technologies and our department, Police Department and the administration is working on a, an e-bike ordinance that Chief is going to have for us in early next year. And I think it's going to take a group effort for all of us to make sure that people stay safe on the trail. It's a wonderful asset and these improvements are greatly appreciated and I hope we can continue to work on improving as much as we can for safety and as increased density and and usage happens. Deputy Raffertani, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, and I apologize. I have a late breaking question. I appreciated the bollards being gone, but does that mean that you're not concerned about people accidentally driving up the trail?
They will.
So we did an analysis of each intersection. And we really weighed the benefits of removing them versus keeping them in place. And what we found was because of the traffic of the trail, it's a higher risk to keep them in place instead of removing them. So ultimately, we decided to remove them.
All right, thanks. That's, that's great to know.
Colleagues, any other questions for our friends at King County? Parks. Okay, thank you very much, Max and Brianna. Really appreciate your help on this. It's it's vast improvement for over what we had before, and I know that there's a lot to be done regionally on the trail system. It's a wonderful asset for all of us. So thank you again for coming.
Thanks for having us and thanks for being such a great partner with King County Parks.
Look forward to more partnership. Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we're, gosh, we're getting to the meat of things here. Public hearing, public hearing on ordinance twenty five thirteen twelve, adopting a new climate element with greenhouse gas reduction and resilient, of resilience sub elements into uh the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update. Director Hoffman is our leader on this journey. Um, and then we'll have questions from you all as uh we move along. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. Uh, we have Alexandra Doty and Maddie Seabert from Cascadia online with a short presentation before the public hearing. I'll do a little housekeeping first. Uh, why are we here? The ordinance before you is to adopt an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And it is needed because of House Bill eleven eighty one in uh twenty twenty two. Uh, what that, no, twenty twenty three. It mandated that cities fully planning under the Growth Management Act adopt a climate element with a greenhouse gas reduction and resiliency sub element. For cities in King County, that uh due date is twenty twenty nine. Uh, the uh legislature also uh was able to fund uh a grant program to help offset the costs. In round one, the city was successful. And the amount is five hundred thousand dollars to embark on this process now in advance of the twenty twenty nine deadline. The city did in RFQ, we selected Cascadia, a leader in the field. There have been quite successful. So they'll give a presentation, but I want to do a little housekeeping first to keep us on track before the public hearing. The climate, the City of Lake Forest Park Climate Action Committee has been in place since twenty twenty two, four years. They were primarily tasked with drafting and pushing forward a climate action plan. That was adopted by the City Council last year in twenty twenty four. They were also instrumental in this climate effort. Uh, the reason being is that we formed a, a climate policy advisory team made up of members of the CAC Climate Action Committee, the Tree Board, and the Planning Commission. Uh, they were able to work with Cascadia, draft a plan, and get that to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then spent five meetings this year considering the draft element uh and made a formal recommendation after a public hearing with a letter of transmittal that was brought to you, I believe, October twenty third. So this is the, the next step, which is a required notice public hearing. We're hoping to perform that tonight. So uh first off, thank you to the CAC. Thank you to the Climate Policy Advisory Team, and thank you to the Planning Commission. I will add that the Commerce Grant was successful, and we are fully reimbursed five hundred thousand dollars on June thirtieth of this year. The Cascadia contract runs through the end of December this year. Hopefully, we'll finish a bit early. Um, but tonight we could also make some revisions and come back at your convenience. The uh three housekeeping items, when policy legis, policy items are passed at the local level or proposed, they need to go to Department of Commerce for a sixty day required review. That have, that started in September, that ends on November sixteenth. Uh, Jeff Akins Commerce Staff, uh fortunately forwarded an email that we shared with you yesterday, put it in writing on the dais. At, at this point, from this notice for the public hearing, that's the only written public comment we received. Why is it important? It signals the end of the sixty day review, even though formally their acknowledgement letter ends on the sixteenth. Uh, it raised a question. First off, it was favorable, and you've read the statements about it, how it's consistent with GMA and RC Dubu. But it raised one question, a suggestion to the council that we would like you to consider, and that was voiced in my email. Would you like to add the climate target goals for greenhouse gas reduction to this element at the policy level? For the reasons stated in my response, uh, I would offer that they're already in the Climate Action Plan, which is a strategy document. There's, there's online support, uh support at MRSC, and in uh my past workings at other city that, that a strategy or a climate action plan is the proper place. It's an implementation action uh type document as opposed to a higher level goal and policy document that this draft climate element is. So you have that uh uh comment letter. There is no other written comment as of this minute. Environmental review, the uh SEPA checklist uh produced a threshold determination of no significant uh impact. That comment period expired. There were no SEPA specific comments. The appeal period also passed this week. There is no SEPA appeal. That is now finished. So we're before the City Council required public hearing. After the public hearing, there are no more steps that staff can identify, and I leave it to the council to make revisions. Uh, the draft ordinance is before you. Exhibit A to the ordinance is a redline version that came out of Planning Commission. It can be amended as you, as you see fit. The reason we have that is that with the public hearing and any comments you receive or any suggestions you may have, um we can further revise it. What would be needed is a clean copy of Exhibit A, and Cascadia is ready to produce that depending on what happens tonight. So with that, I'll leave it to Cascadia to do their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. Let me finagle screen sharing here. Great. Is that working? Perfect. Thank you so much for having us back tonight. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. We only have a few slides here to share a very brief and high level overview of this review draft of the climate element. Mark has gone over some of these pieces. Um, just as a reminder, for the record, in twenty twenty three, the legislature amended Washington's Growth Management Act through House Bill eleven eighty one, and the resulting Growth Management Act requirements newly task cities and counties to plan for reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and enhance community resiliency to the adverse impacts of climate change. As Mark mentioned, and as required by law, Lake Forest Park's climate element includes a greenhouse gas emissions reduction and a climate resilience sub element. And it is informed by data and community engagement. It's it's a standalone element, but it is integrated with other city plans and comp plan elements, and it is supported by the community, city staff, and hopefully decision makers such as yourselves. Uh, and we have made it clear, feasible, um with a path forward to implementation that the city will undertake in the next few months. And here is a visual overview of the two types of requirements um encompassed within the emissions reduction sub element and the resilience sub element. The emissions reduction sub element in Lake Forest Park's climate element includes five goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, which are called out as separate requirements under the Growth Management Act in HB eleven eighty one. And the resilience sub element includes four goals to improve community resilience to climate impacts. Uh, this graphic describes the climate element development process from the second half of twenty twenty four through all of this year. Um, we launched the project in October twenty twenty four, completed a number of technical analyses to support development of the climate element. The first one we conducted was a policy audit of current Lake Forest Park Comprehensive Plan policies and ten other policy documents to see about any gaps and opportunities to incorporate climate change. Then we assessed key climate hazards facing the city and identified climate vulnerabilities facing the community as well as physical assets and infrastructure. We worked uh with Fair and Peers as well to evaluate travel patterns and sources of vehicle miles traveled within Lake Forest Park from residents, visitors um and others coming and going. We uh assess greenhouse gas emissions that the city and the community contribute so that we can be sure of the city's contributions to climate change, and we projected future emissions to guide policies. Throughout the project, we also engaged city staff, the Climate Policy Advisory Team, and the Lake Forest Park community through a survey, an in-person open house, and interviews with youth, and we pulled all of these efforts together into the review draft of the climate element. Since that process um resulting in the draft, we have been going through this draft review and adoption process, which has involved three meetings with the Planning Commission um and sets of revision to bring the draft to you here tonight. Uh, our next steps from here will be to incorporate any feedback from the City Council. We are happy to reply to any questions, concerns, or feedback that we hear tonight or by email, uh and then hopefully aiming for adoption relatively soon. And just echoing here that there are two materials available in the meeting packet. Both drafts were developed in October. Uh, and in front of you, there is the climate element itself as well as a policy development memo. So the climate element uh is a redlined version. As Mark mentioned, it is not a clean version, and that is to give you context about what came out of the initial drafting process, and then what changes we made as a result of the final community review of the draft and Planning Commission meetings. So all of the tracked changes reflect changes since that initial review draft. Um, and the policy development memo contains more detail about each policy, policies we've recommended uh removing and replacing from the current comprehensive plan, a rationale for each policy, a summary of co-benefits. Um, so that's a great source for additional details about the policies that are listed in the climate element. And that is all we have tonight. Um, next steps are limited, and we've talked through them already. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, everyone, and all the hard work from all the teams. Good, goodness, this is a milestone for us, or to be before the council. Colleagues, questions for our friends here for Director Hoffman? Before, uh, I guess, actually, we'll start with the public hearing, and then we can ask some questions after that. So I would like to open the public hearing on uh ordinance um twenty five thirteen twelve, adopting a new climate element with greenhouse gas uh reduction and so resilience sub elements to the twenty twenty four, into the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update. That um opened the floor to public comment. Sarah Phillips, please join us at the podium. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Um, my name is Sarah Phillips. I served on the Climate Action Committee as the chair uh and also on the um Climate Policy Advisory Team with uh three, two other members from the uh Climate Action Committee and um some fabulous people from both the Planning Commission and the Tree Board. It was a very collaborative group that worked together on this, and I just want to say that I'm here to support the um amendment to the comp plan. Um, that I think the, that there's a great deal of um alignment between the Climate Action Plan and um and the the policy document that you have in front of you. But the um, the, the climate element talks about um uh emissions reduction and resilience, and the Climate Action Plan adds, as you all recall, the third element, which is um keeping our um enhancing our environment and the ecosystem health and um CO2 reduction. The, we, the Climate Action Plan has implementation strategies um and action goals around transportation, buildings, land use, solid waste, um the natural environment, and the community resiliency. So there's a great deal of alignment, but I, I do just want to say that the Climate Action Plan is the vehicle for turning policy into action and staffing. I only have one tune, right? Um, uh, staffing is the way you as a council transform a policy document, which if you don't staff, is just decoration on your, on your shelf. Um, and that um, the one, the way that we move forward in terms of, of this this policy document that you have, the Climate Action Plan, is um providing staffing so that the city um can, can move forward. And these policy documents that you're create, you're creating now is what will allow you to go after documents because you will have the policy framework uh for uh for um funding sources. So I hope that you will pass this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make public comment that has not signed up? This is specifically in ordinance twenty five thirteen twelve, the public hearing. Okay. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone. Are there any questions that you would like Director Hoffman to address? Councilmember Riddle, and then Councilmember Good.
So I have a couple that I think are for you. One is uh, or possibly our consultants. Um, goal CE four, the emergency management goal, uh policy to encourage onsite energy storage and backup systems for neighborhoods. Would it be beneficial to strengthen that, like encourage or facilitate? I know that there's um you know, the, the city can be a pass through to lower cost items at wholesale value. We've done this before on other, on other item. Uh, so I was just wondering if we could look at would it make sense to strengthen that by adding or facilitate? Or does that have some issues?
Um, and uh, I don't want to preclude Cascadia from responding, but I will start with there was much discussion at each level about the wording and the force behind it, and shall, should, could, same as always. So uh, there's much thought into the words that were selected. Can they be revised to reflect the, the council's sentiment? Absolutely. Um, but they are policy driven as opposed to action items. And as far as any particular goal or policy, I, I didn't hear the number, but I want to make sure Maddie uh did, in case you would suggest a revision.
CE four point two would be the one I would think of. Um. And I think from a policy question standpoint, for mobility hubs, um, I thought like the micro mobility devices, I thought we didn't have uh an agreement with, let's say, Lime bikes or Limes uh, do we, at this point in the city, is that correct?
We do not.
Okay.
And it does start with encourage. Did, were you suggesting promote or something?
No, that one, I just wanted to make sure that I understood where we were with this policy as far as when we moved to implementation, because that would be it, something we'd have to change. Um, I think that's, I'll, I'll start, I'll stop there and let others.
That's where we're good.
Mine is uh a question may not be relevant, I mean, completely relevant to the plan, but I was wondering if with the adoption of this plan, if the role of the climate coordinator, if the job description changed at all. So I'm just saying, if it, if I know that we did have a job description and if this if we're using this as a basis, does that role change in description in any way? Just a question for later.
Let's bookmark that one. Thank you. Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, yes, thanks. I want to follow up on the question I asked at our previous meeting. Um, this is about policy eight point three. Um, that was one where it was, the original eight point three was recommended by the Climate Advisory Team, but then it was removed by the Planning Commission. And so I'm just hoping to get some more context as to why the Climate Advisory Team wanted it in and why the Planning Commission wanted it out.
And as a reminder, from October twenty third, um, that there was no specific pro or anti-parking analysis. So the, the other uh uh policy that you mentioned was very specific, the parking pricing, that was deleted very specifically. This one, looking back at my notes, uh and not reviewing every discussion, it was more along the lines at CPAT and Planning Commission that this will be either mandated or looked at with other legislative uh amendments. Whether it be transit oriented development or any of the handful of other bills coming our way or already in place but uh not implemented. So is it just a general feeling that let's strike it and address it more specifically in accordance with a proposal that addresses that, that topic?
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me check with our colleagues online. Uh, Deputy Refertani, do you have any questions or comments? Hey, Councilmember McCartney? Thumbs up, all good? And? Yeah, Councilmember Saunders, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm, I'm all good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. I do have one last that I think is appropriate for right now. Goal CE 8.1. We define transit-oriented development. It's within a radius of 0.5 miles. Is that a definition that is standard, or is that something that we can look into? Is that like a fixed radius?
There is much legislation talking about a quarter mile versus half miles. Lots of discussion over the last three years, so it depends on the context. Right now, we're offering something that's consistent with what's in GMA. So half mile would be broader than just us choosing a radius. It's likely to be ultimately consistent with what we're mandated.
Because I think it would be useful to clarify that some bit, because our roads don't always go, you know, that half mile might include a road that you can't actually get to the transit-oriented development, but it would be quote-unquote "within the radius." So I think we might want to just think about the reality of what that would look like in our community, because if you have to go outside of the radius all the way to get back to the transit, you know, space, I wouldn't, I, it's just a question I think we should look into.
I think at the policy level, we're comfortable with this number.
Okay.
And then as we get into individual tasks or implementation, then whatever bandwidth we have to choose that distance, or however it relates to that issue, we would explore what we have to do versus what you would like to do in an action item or implementation item, whereas this is just broader. And, you know, does it have to be consistent with the policies? Yes. Does it have to be consistent with each and every word of every policy in this document? No. So it's a guidance at this level.
Okay.
But I think it'd be more consistent to leave the guidance at this number.
Okay. Thank you.
You, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions for Director Hoffman or for our friends at Cascadia? Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
This is not a question, but I just wanted to compliment you on the work that was done on this, this project. It was, it's, it's an amazing element, and really appreciate the outreach you did to the community, including our high school students, which is so important. Also, really appreciate the fact that we now have an independent set of numbers for greenhouse gas emissions versus the K4C numbers that are already available, and that the numbers are relatively consistent, which is a great sign. You know, plus or minus the air travel thing, right, which is always going to be a problem. But nevertheless, the, the work that was done, I really commend you on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Director Hoffman, what's your expectation this, this evening?
I clarified with Jeff Aiken at Commerce, was his email the official response? Normally, we get a letter that says, your 60 days has now taken place there, or that these comments are not. He clarified, those are the comments. There will be no more comments forthcoming. So even though the acknowledgement letter says 60 days through November 16th, they consider this closed. And more or less, he said, thank you. This is very consistent, this is quality work. So Commerce is satisfied, the SEPA is over, there was no SEPA appeal. The public hearing is held tonight. Once the public hearing is closed, this is entirely in the hands of the council. Quite a bit of work has been put into this, lots of comments early, and as you see, there's not many issues remaining. So I would entertain that if there is support, it, it could be acted on tonight. But if not, we anticipate next Thursday's special meeting of the council has the opportunity to do so, and Cascadia would be available next Thursday.
Colleagues, what's your, Councilmember Riddle?
I have one late coming comment or question, but I think, comment to, I think, I think we want one more week to, to noodle on this as council, personally, because I have some comments here I'd like to discuss with my colleagues of whether it was going to go forward.
Let's take the temperature of the group. Councilmember Riddle, Deputy Mayor Ferratani, would you like to have another week? Negative.
I, I could go either way on this. Basically, if there are council members who have some things they want to still bring up, obviously, they should be looked at. So, you know, there's no, there's no time limit, right? We should probably get this done by the end of the year, but we don't have to get it done by the end of, say, November or anything, right?
That's correct.
Overall, for growth management, we're four years early, so I would say the only constraint is the Cascadia contract through December. So we're certainly available. I would add, if we do that and come back next week, we would like to produce a clean Exhibit A, which still could be modified next Thursday, but it would prepare for action.
Got it. Thank you.
So colleagues, keep in mind that it's a special meeting next week, so materials have to be presented or produced post-haste. If you have additional changes or concerns, do, let, let me go around, just get a head nod. Are, is everyone feeling positive about it next week? Or, okay? Okay. It's great. All right. Thank you very much, Director Hoffman.
And then Nick.
Thank you.
Can I ask my one other policy-type question?
Please.
Policy CE 4.5, then it looks like a new one that was brought in by Planning Commission to take steps to maintain reliability of the power grid. Since that isn't, I'm curious how that language came about, because we don't maintain the power grid, so what was the discussion around that particular addition? Policy addition?
There was much discussion about trees, and as you no doubt are aware, that's a high priority for the city. But tree maintenance and whether Seattle City Light or any of the utility providers have maintenance programs, it was discussed about quite, discussed quite a bit. So in ranking or identifying risk and resiliency to the city, that's what generated this. Each winter, there's power outages, trees fall, can we maintain them? So I think that's the reason behind this being in there.
So this, this wasn't necessarily a discussion towards having a conversation with the utilities, it was more about what we have control over, which is tree trimming programs that we approve from the utilities.
It puts it on the radar, makes it known. How it would be implemented would come up through time. But if, for instance, there, there was a grant, or there was a request from the council for a utility provider to address issues in the community proactively, that policy would be in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Golden.
Yes, I have two comments. The first is, I don't believe we actually answered Director Hoffman's question to us. That was the one about, do we want to explicitly include greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas emission targets in the climate element, or do we want to leave it in the Climate Action Plan? And so I think, would it be helpful to you, Director Hoffman, to get that sense of the council today?
If the consensus is to do so, it would be very helpful. If the consensus is, we think that the Climate Action Plan is the strategy document, that's the easier one to amend over time. And, and while everything from the federal level to the state level, to King County, to K4C, to the local level, which this policy is for, are roughly consistent, their baseline years are different, their, their numbers are different, ours are slightly higher in aspiration. We're very different than the overall county. So I, I believe the strategy document is where that lies, and it's strong enough, thanks to the Climate Action Committee. But the opportunity there is to make a policy statement, it is a policy document, but once it's in the comprehensive plan, it becomes a little bit more difficult, or it's not as easy to amend. But it can be done. It is policy or a goal.
Thank you. So I guess my question for my colleagues would be, does anyone feel strongly about adding the greenhouse gas targets into the climate element?
Colleagues, start with our friends online. Do you want, is this something that you would like to add to the policy document, or leave it at the tactical level within the Climate Action Plan?
And just to clarify, Jeff Aiken's comment was the net zero by 2050. It's not altogether clear or confirmed, he was aware of the Climate Action Plan, but he is now. He's not amending his comment, but that was specific to the net zero goal. The city has a 2030 goal, a 2040 goal, a 2050 goal, and net zero, and those are in the strategic plan.
Deputy Mayor Ferratani.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with not including it. It's, it's, it's a strategy item, and it's already in the Climate Action Plan, and it's actually more specific in the Climate Action Plan, so I appreciate where we are with that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, any other?
I agree.
I could go either way.
Okay.
And then, please. My second comment, I, I, coming back to 8.3, I understand what you're saying. I guess I'm not totally convinced in that state law can change, the legislature can amend or remove or add to targets. And so I think that our comprehensive plan should stand on its own, and that not assume what the state will mandate to us. And to me, 8.3 seems reasonable, so I personally would be in favor of restoring 8.3. But I'd be happy to hear other thoughts.
Colleagues, any thoughts on restoration of 8.3 to the mix?
Just as a reminder for those that, what 8.3 is?
Reducing parking minimums near transit-oriented development.
I, I don't think that we've had that discussion, and I don't think that, at the moment, based upon what I know, I would not be in favor of it.
You, Councilmember. Checking with our colleagues online. 8.3? Yes, Councilmember McCartney.
I would also echo that too, simply just because of some of the things that we'd heard about the Planning Commission and the discussion, I think that there should be a lot more robust discussion around that, so taking that out, or changing that at this point, I would not be in favor of and want to stick in line with what the recommendation was.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor Ferratani, while we're, we're going around the screen here.
Yes, and I'm also in favor of keeping the Planning Commission recommendation. I need a, I need the line drawn between parking minimums and reducing greenhouse gases, and to me, that's not particularly clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Going around the horn.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Councilmember Goldman, it looks like the, the general consensus is to leave that 8.3 as out of, out of the mix right now. Any other questions? And I would remind everybody, because of timeliness and consideration of staff time and our friends at Cascadia, if you have suggestions, they really probably need to be submitted tomorrow to the team, early and often, or early and singular, as the case may be, just because we're, we're getting down to the crunch time here in terms of our, our, our schedule, as it were.
And if the clerk will allow, I believe we have Cascadia and staff bi-weekly meeting on Monday, and when we talked, we talked about having a clean copy on Monday. So, and we could certainly produce the clean copy, have it by Monday, prepare the packet for the 20th, and field and distribute any comments or suggestions that you have, all the way up in, into Thursday night.
All right. I think we are, colleagues, any other questions for Director Hoffman, or Alexandra, or, or Matty? Okay, hearing done. Thank you very much, Director Hoffman, for getting close. Thank you very much, everybody from Cascadia. Appreciate your time very much, this is great. And huge thanks to the Planning Commission, the CAC, and Tree Board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thanks so much. Good night.
Good night. All right. To the consent calendar. I'd hear, I entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to for adoption of the consent calendar. Any questions or comments? All this in favor of adoption is signified by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Moving on to ordinance, this is a resolution for council discussion, Resolution 252039, authorizing the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Contract for Public Defense Services with Stuart Nichols, McNichols, Harmel Incorporated, P.S., Administrator Hill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Back in 2018, the city selected Stuart McNichols and Harmel to provide public defense services for the city's municipal court. That contract was renewed in 2023 for a three-year term. However, Section 2.5.2 renegotiation due to change in rule or standard of the current contract provides that the agreement may be renegotiated at the option of either party if the Washington State Supreme Court or Bar Association, or the city significantly modifies the standards for indigent defense. As you know, the Supreme Court has done such, and so Ken Harmel has reached out to renegotiate under that provision for the next year of the contract. Now, this would only be for a one-year extension, because they would like to look at what additional impacts will come over the next year. I can tell you that, you know, you'll remember, this is a two-thirds reduction in the number of cases that the attorneys can handle, but that's phased in over 10 years, so you think not a lot of impact. But the impact that is already being seen is large entities are scooping up very qualified attorneys and paying them increased amounts to get them to a move. And so the whole dynamic for this profession has changed with salaries, and so our attorneys have had to increase what they pay, hence costs go up. We do share these attorneys with several cities, so that is helping with that impact, but I'm not fully offsetting that. So currently, we pay $10,000 a month. This contract proposes to be $11,250 per month. That's for the first 45 cases, and in speaking with Ken, this is to try and level it out, make it easier for finance to anticipate budget, watch on our dashboard as that comes in. But then after 45 cases, that will add $750 per case. In 2024, we had a total of 217 cases, on 2025, we're on track for 224 cases. So based on those case counts and that $750 on top, we're looking at roughly $50,000 increase per year for public defense services. We only anticipated in the budget inflation, did not anticipate this type of an increase, and this is solely supported by the general fund. The OO2 fund cannot support this, because it is not related to those types of traffic safety issues. So, any questions tonight? We're not asking for action tonight. I would like to try and get Ken or somebody from his staff available for your December meeting before you take action on this, but I can take any questions tonight and come back with answers for you.
Thank you, Administrator Hill. Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill? Councilmember Riddle?
Go ahead.
Did you have a question?
Oh, thank you. You mentioned that OO2 is not available for this, and that is because it doesn't involve any of the traffic camera.
Correct. They, yeah, I talked to Ken, and they do not, they cannot tie their work directly to OO2 cameras, they, they.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, that the increase in cost is from 10K to 11 to 50 for the first 45 cases, and then $750 per case after that.
Correct.
And so then, the estimate for increase for the year is, the increase alone is 50K?
50,000.
Or is that the, the cost of the contract?
No, we currently pay $120,000 a year for this.
So it'll be 170?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Check with our colleagues online. Deputy Mayor Ferratani? Any questions? Councilmember McCartney? Any questions? Councilmember Saunders, any questions? Okay.
And just one more thing to add that I should have added is, I've checked with the courts, they've been very pleased with the services. This is contracted through the administration, it's a conflict for the courts to have this contract, so the administration puts out the RFP, does a selection, but I've had no complaints, I don't think we've had any complaints from those who utilize the services, so it seems to be working well for us.
It's great. It's important work. Thank you, Administrator Hill. We look forward to a future discussion about this. Appreciate it. Okay.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
I have to, I have to go, so I apologize, but you still have a quorum, so I think you're okay.
Okay.
Okay. Take care. Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Have a great day.
All right, thank you.
My Japanese is failing me, there's, trying to think of something to say. Okay, moving on to the 2025, 2026 mid-biennial budget adjustment, the amendment. Director Vaughn?
Thank you, Mayor. Lindsay Vaughn, Finance Director, and I am just buying our clerk a minute of time to pull up the presentation to go over. So this is the city's mid-biennial, oh, I do have the clicker, thank you, Matt, the mid-biennial budget adjustment, and we've discussed about some of the budget. And, um, we've discussed about some of the budget amendments previous this year, um, starting in the spring and then again in August. And now we're bringing forward um, the changes. So some of this will be repetitive. Um, as we walk into the general fund, uh, to start, we have some, from the revenues to the expenditures, I would call them, define them as um, pass-throughs. So if there's money coming in and then on the revenue side and it's walking through to a direct expenditure, that's what I would define as a pass-through. And so we have quite a few grant pass-throughs, um, for the police department. Um, there's three grant pass-throughs. Um, one for being an accredited agency, and I do want to make a note there that on the actual agenda cover, I think I misdescribed that. I gave the wrong agency credit for that grant. So just make note, it is WASPIC and not what I put on the agenda cover. And, um, then there's a health and wellness grant for, uh, just over seven thousand dollars and then an AED replacement equipment for seventy-five hundred. And then going down into the judicial, um, there was an overtime reimbursement that came from a couple challenges in late twenty twenty-four. Um, there was a system issue. And in addition, back to back, there was the, um, bomb cyclone. And therefore that put a incredible pressure on the court, um, in order to process, uh, a, a overwhelming amount of payments in a very short amount of time. And then AOC decided to reimburse our court administrator, did a fantastic job of tracking that and was able to get almost fourteen thousand dollars reimbursed back to the city, which then they are asking to walk it through to expand their overtime budget in twenty-five, which is when we received the money. Um, due to, and they're asking for that in order to, um, pay for a system upgrade that they're going to be doing in the second quarter of this year. And then there's an interpreter grant that, um, they get, we get reimbursed, the city, uh, gets reimbursed fifty percent of that grant. And so, um, we do need to expand it just a little bit, about fifty-five hundred. And then, uh, another item for the police department is we have overtime. They're overtime. So when we support third-party agencies for security services, um, those agencies are billed invoiced and they submit invoices and pay the city. And therefore it has driven our police department's overtime. Um, their actual expenditures up except for that the city has received money for that overtime spent. So we just need to true that up. Um, and, and have it cross through. So it's, it's on both sides, the revenue and the expenditure. And then on King County, the waste reduction recycling, um, the city, we did budget the expenditure side, but we didn't budget uh, the revenue side, and so we need to true that up. The passport revenue is exceeding what we originally budgeted. Um, there are definitely some costs tied to that. I don't want to say it's a direct pass-through, but there are some costs that we are requesting to expand in this mid biennial budget for the municipal services department to support supplies, passport, directly passport taxes and assessments. So we pay money on on the money that is receipted in, um, to the Department of Revenue and postage. And then I also wanted to, um, we're, I'm going to, we're asking to amend um, the republic contract obligation. So if you remember, um, when there was the labor dispute and, um, they didn't, um, weren't able to, uh, pick up garbage, then that was, uh, the amount that they ended up per our contract owing the city. So then going to the expenses, um, the executive professional services department, uh, there, we're in the middle of two negotiations this year. In addition to having, um, some additional H R support that was desperately needed this year. And, um, I'm going to walk into quite a few, just at a very high level of the personnel and the salaries and, and then after my presentation, I'm going to invite our H R director up here who has a short presentation to go into more detail on that. So, um, the municipal services, again, I'm repeating, but it's the supplies, the taxes and assessments, communications and postage, and we're asking to expand that, um, to true up to the actual expenditures. Um, back from last spring, uh, are, we brought forward that laser fish, um, what was put in the original budget. It did exceed that cost. And so we were asking to amend by about twelve thousand dollars for the one-time portion of it. And so we need to carry that through. Um, the contracts at this point ha- has been discussed quite a bit. The public defender is being, um, requested to increase at about fifty thousand. And again, making note of what was just previously stated, that cost is estimated from the previous caseload numbers. That's our best educated guess on the fiscal impact exceeding what we have already budgeted in the twenty-five, twenty-six original adopted budget. And then the prosecutor's contract, that is going to in anticipated to increase an additional forty-eight thousand dollars. And then I did put in that Judge Grant's contract is going to increase, but that's going to mainly hit the, um, traffic safety fund plus the additional pro tem hours of the point one, and those are going to hit the traffic safety fund. And then the, um, police department, um, this goes back to the original, uh, salaries and benefits. Uh, their, their collective bargaining agreement, that is a CBA. I shouldn't have shorthanded that. Plus the buyouts, they've had multiple buyouts in twenty twenty-five. And we definitely know that there's a couple more that are already known for twenty twenty-six. And the value of those buyouts in twenty twenty-five was, um, over a hu- a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Director, can you clarify what a buyout is?
Absolutely. So, uh, per the collective bargaining agreement, the city, um, thank you for stopping me and allowing me to explain that. So the city has an obligation i- as part of the collective bargaining agreement, um, that when, uh, an officer, um, has vacation, um, sick leave and, and other leaves that are within the allowable, within that, that actual agreement, the city then owes at the time of separation or retirement, um, a certain amount of that to be paid out to that officer. So that is what we would define internally as a, a buyout or a cash out when an employee either retires versus or separates from the city. So even if an employee, um, didn't retire, if they just simply separated and they have a, um, and they have a, a bank of vacation, that would also be considered a buyout, um, and as it's money owed to the employee. For, um, a benefit that they are owed. And that also can be referred to as compensated absences. Um, so then, uh, walking down to turnover costs of uniforms, badges and vests. So with this, um, I'll just call it turnover, turnover being you have one employee, they separate or retire and you're filling that position, that definitely comes at a cost of uniforms, badges, vests, tra- additional training. And so the police department is asking to expand um, between all of those areas about forty-five thousand dollars. And I did see there was a comment, is that on, is that a?
Councilmember Saunders had to step away.
Oh, okay.
Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an actual, a question.
Where are we? Online, do we, is anyone just Councilmember, uh, McCartney? Okay, thank you. So I don't want to miss somebody. Questions?
Okay. Um, and then going down to facilities, um, at the beginning of this year, right when we had a brand new, um, Public Works Director, we had some building challenges for health and safety. And that immediately she had to jump into an address. And those had, uh, a, an impact on our, our budget and have exceeded. And so therefore those are one-time um, emergency costs that the city incurred that need to be, uh, amended as a true-up to allow twenty twenty-six to have a budget to support our facilities. And then walking down to salaries and benefits, this is, I just want to make note that there's market, there's some market adjustments being recommended for a very few handful of non-represented positions, the judicial department. Um, and I'm going to just hit kind of pause on that, um, because our H R director is going to definitely go into more detail on that discussion. And then, um, the item at the previous meeting we brought forward, um, some discussion on tied to the proviso of the climate coordinator. Um, however, what's also in the mid biennial, uh, budget proposal is additional discussion, um, around the H R specialist that was put into the original budget, um, request and then was removed due to, um, budgeting challenges. So then going into, uh, some of the areas that are just going to hit multiple funds, your Teamsters collective bargaining agreement also has been, um, and actually is on this agenda to be discussed this evening. So that has had a, a financial impact to multiple funds across the city's budget. The general fund being the parks and facilities, the street fund, the sewer fund, the surface water fund, um, outside what was originally estimated. And so that needs to be trued up to show as an actual. And then the overtime, um, simply saying, uh, we, we budgeted too lean, um, for how the city is actually responding to across all funds, to weather events, call out special events, community events. And so we need to true that up, um, to being more actual of the costs that are being incurred for our public works crew. So the traffic safety fund, there's a couple items here. Um, some is carryover from the very beginning discussions. But the judicial department salaries and benefits, the municipal judge, uh, her F T E is being proposed to increase from point six to point seven five directly due to the, uh, traffic tickets, the, the walks, full walk zone tickets that, the walk zone tickets that are actually, um, coming in. In addition to the pro tem increase of the point one, um, which equates to just about two hundred hours. And then for the fiscal year and then, uh, basically a market adjustment for the judicial department. Um, which, uh, will be gone into in more detail in, in just after my presentation. And then a couple of the true-up items that we've been discussing from very early on this year is due to knowing that the department was going to, the court department was going to need to rearrange their office furniture in order to hire, um, additional staff to support the, the need and their desk arrangement didn't fit, um, the actual needs. So there was some furniture reassessing and that needed to take place and some supplies and outside costs that, um, need to be allocated as they were directly due to that expansion. And then as part of the fleet conversation, two vehicles were, um, agreed to be a traffic vehicles for the police department. Um, were supported to be paid for out of the traffic safety fund. So then to the street fund, basically, um, within the street fund, it's salaries and benefits, the true-up. Um, and there is an additional, the non-represented, uh, public work superintendent, that conversation in addition to the overtime adjustment. And then the capital improvement funds, so three oh one and three oh two, capital improvement fund, three oh one. Um, there is a proposed park acquisition. And in addition to acquiring an additional, um, park, there are some additional purchase expenses, um, that go, go with a, a park acquisition. And then going into the transportation capital fund, three oh two, the safe streets, early action. Um, the revenue side, uh, the, the expend, the expenditure and revenue side were funded in the original budget. Um, however, what wasn't budgeted was then the walkthrough of the actual expenditures. It's, um, allocating that additional three hundred thousand, um, to the safe streets, early action. So that needs to be trued up to walk through to expand that safe streets, early action, um, as um, was intended. And then going into sewer utility operations, I'm going to say a valuable lesson learned here. Um, I will be bringing forward to you e- on an annual basis, even though King County says that they will not be changing their rates. Lesson learned, they did at the eleventh hour and thank goodness I double-checked. Um, so it was originally, so you actually are, I'm requesting that we now amend our sewer utility rate for twenty, um, twenty-six. We did originally adopt that in the, um, in the budget, but now that it's increased by additional point five, I'm asking to increase that and have it walk through on the revenue and the expenditure side. So the rate went up an additional thirty cents, um, for the residential rate. Um, and so we do need to make sure that we are passing that through. And, um, in addition to the, in the sewer fund is the Teamsters salaries and benefits. And then the commercial, the sewer commercial and multifamily rate, which we also will discuss in the user fee um, portion. And then the surface water fund, um, what was built into the original adopted budget was to increase it in additional fifteen percent. Ten percent was allocated for operational purposes and five percent towards the stormwater program coordinator. And the additional ten percent for operations. If the city didn't end up using it for operation, then it was to go directly into the, um, capital fund, the surface water capital. So that's what it's supporting. Um, and then the material bin cover capital project that had a change order, um, for contaminated soil that needs to be expanded. And then walking into our internal, our final funds, our internal service funds, our vehicle and equipment repair and replacement, there was lots of conversation early this year, walking through our fleet fund strategies. Um, we did fund in the original budget, the revenue portion, we held off on hold on allocating the expenditure for that discussion. And as we walked through that discussion, then came to what was the appropriate amount to spend and the city's philosophy on replacement schedules, et cetera. So there was a ton of discussion around the vehicle repair and replacement for both the police and the public works departments. And then in addition, the public works equipment, the, um, sweeper brush head needed to be replaced at the very end of twenty-four that then carried into twenty-five. And so we need to, we need to carry that budget forward to pay for it out of this fiscal year. The information technology fund, there are, uh, definitely some, some challenges within this fund. So they're on the professional service side, we just under budgeted some additional professional services is the K D H consulting in addition to our I L A with Yakima did increase. And so we needed to expand for an additional rack space and, um, internet, uh, capacity. Um, our hardware, there's, the city has very actively been replacing hardware and computers. And there was a very large invoice again, that was a twenty twenty-four invoice that, uh, did, wasn't actually paid until twenty twenty-five. And so, and then within the software line item, uh, a couple, a handful of things that makes up this, uh, our office three sixty-five that we budgeted what we thought was appropriate for two years and we've almost used it in one. So, uh, we, we So uh we we definitely missed the mark on that one, on what we anticipated that cost to be. And then in addition, we have two additional pieces uh for an I T department of one. We implemented and paid, it's a three year software. It's called Sis Aid and it's a ticketing system in order to have like a help desk ticket system. And in addition, what that does for, to assist a department of one is it tracks all of your basically your systems, um issues, et cetera. So you start to build a knowledge base in addition. And then the third thing that's in there is pace scheduling software. So this currently, the police department uses pace scheduling software and is incredibly happy with that software. Cur- so the city, on the city side, we have um adopted that we are going to look to do that, that software in addition. And um, and so we need to amend that cost. And then walking into the twenty twenty six user fee schedule. The passport fees, so what's being proposed here is to increase the photo fee from twenty dollars to twenty five. Um, there is a new need to eh basically um to have digital photos. And so now we're adding to meet demand of a new desire, um adding the capacity to have a digital photo. And then for the building fees, um I worked with our new building official in order to basically, she said that to stay in line with the August twenty twenty five, the international code uh council building valuation, two things need to definitely be addressed for twenty twenty six, which are the standard home being increased to meet following that um the the latest version of the code. In addition to the utility building, which is like an outbuilding versus a garage, um that also needs to be increased to match what um the code. And then in addition, it was noted for transparency that the basically any outside consultant fees are direct pass through cost um to the building or to the um individual that is uh asking and requiring those services. So then walking down to the sewer uh monthly service fee. So here, in addition, we're just very transparently showing that the monthly rate uh is going to increase and we are amending it to eighty six twenty four. Um, and then the commercial rate, um and then the surface water utility assessments. Um, that is also proposing the amendment of the additional uh fifteen percent noting at the bottom there, and I'm gonna point it out that this, it definitely, we need to include the ten percent of the calculated um for the service tax in addition. And that concludes my version of the presentation. And I am going to uh pass it over to our HR director and then I will be right here and to answer any questions after the fact.
Thank you, Director.
There was one item that I don't think I did, I wanted to just uh.
I think we did that.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Is that the right one?
Okay.
You think you.
Yeah, as she said, Shannon Moore, HR Director, hello. Matt, do I just, oh, perfect. Thanks, Matt. So I just wanted to go into more detail as it related to the preliminary budgeted position and salary schedule. As some of you may recall, each year I do go through a market analysis of our nonrepresented positions. And a lot of that, even outside of the uh two year budget cycle, is done to see where we land in relation to our comparables. What you'll see in the memo in front of you, uh these are the five positions that we're asking counsel to consider in making a market adjustment to the court administrator and court clerk, public records specialist, public work superintendent and finance specialist are outside of what our comparables are and and really high impact positions for us. As you can see even from our public work superintendent position, how long it's taken us, which I'm yay, we actually have one, having uh someone start, I'll get into later, but he'll start in December. Uh, so I think that uh it's really important for us to try to keep up with our comparables. That being said, what you're seeing with the percentages are not necessarily going to be translating exactly to the percentages that you'll see our staff are going to be seeing for their increase. We have a six step salary schedule. And within there, the three that you see highlighted there, the public works superintendent, public records specialist and the finance specialist. While it may look like they might be increasing six to fourteen percent on the actual schedule, the finance positions, for example, would only be moving about point one percent. Because there, we would be um in line with what we've done in the past, moving someone to their appropriate step. So they wouldn't be receiving a step uh, they might be going down a step, but they wouldn't be receiving a wage decrease. So some of that might be very similar to what they're making now or uh smaller increase in what you're seeing on that total percentage there. I don't know if you want me to stop for any questions or I will just keep going through.
Yeah, you lost me. Why, why would you have these increases but not the income would translate to the person?
Yeah, so for example, if we have someone that's in a step three, they might have been, when we're hiring, because some of these positions have been so low in the market, what we're finding is the way that our comp structure has initially been set up. Where we've been making adjustments on the top end of our step. And what that has had this trickle down effect of is we're, we're hiring people into these positions that are at the, the, trying to be at step one, right? Step one, step two, what's commensurate to their experience, their education. But we're, we are greatly out of line with market at our lower end. And so part of what we're slowly trying to do is correct that. But in order to hire someone in competitively, sometimes that means that we need to hire someone at a step two, for example, or three, instead of, in order to just be at market. And so what we're doing here is chewing it up a bit, where if someone was hired in as a step two, which would be market, maybe with this adjustment of us getting our wages back on track, that actually moves them to a step one. It still ensures internal equity that everyone across the board who might be holding similar positions, we're looking at in the same way. But we have to course correct a little bit and we had to be able to hire people in competitively. And to do that, sometimes that means you need to go above your, your step one, for example, step two. And so we have positions that we have hired in that we need to get them to market. We had to hire them at market, but we can now, hopefully with the changes in this, the salary schedule adjusting, their step would be adjusted as well, so that they're not having a pay decrease. They would, but this whole schedule grows so that someone can be able to grow with market.
I got it.
I I doubt, I'm trying to.
No, I got it.
Keep, yes, thank you.
My visual is that.
The escalator analogy.
Yes. So. So that, those are the five that really uh we feel are important to bring now and not wait till our, our true, our, our bien- biannual. Thank you.
I know.
Thank you. Uh, so then the next piece, I know we've heard about court a lot. And I'm very visual. So when I received this grid from our court, it, I thought painted a really good picture of where we're at in the state right now. You'll see that Lake Forest Park Municipal Court, we say judicial because it's easier for us to, you know, um have them listed out, but same thing for purposes of what we're talking about right here. You'll see that we are second um highest in the state for case filings. Uh, Linwood just beats us out just by five thousand or so uh total. And this is just for the parking photo enforcement side. It doesn't take into account the regular assigned duties of the criminal side of what our court works on. So what that's gonna include is our uh in clerk, clerk functions, maintaining warrants, uh main mandated domestic violence duties, arranging transport for defenders, defendants, excuse me, there's a lot of administrative tasks as well on the criminal side. Uh, so what you'll see, we also have is about half of the staffing that Linwood has, uh as you'll see about nine, uh we have four and a half, and then Kirkland had, who's third highest uh is fifteen on their staffing. And that's just our, what we would translate to our court clerk currently. I would wanna make sure I'm not miscoating anything, Judge. Okay.
Yeah, Vice Chairman.
Yeah, so uh, thank you. Looking at this table, um it seems that some of us are way out of whack, that like, let's compare us to Marysville. Marysville has twice as many court clerks as we do, despite one sixth the number of citations. So it seems that either our department is way too small or Marysville's department is way too big.
Maybe both. I can't speak to exactly. I know that uh some courts do other things like uh Bothell, for example. They, they have recently posted uh and they have their court clerks uh or, excuse me, they call them judicial specialists also doing passports. So I don't know if they've expanded some of the roles differently than what ours are, but I know that that um this is a question I'd much rather the judge answer.
I think you might see some of the disparity is that they may have more criminal cases than we have. But we are, our volume for the photo tickets is really what's making it difficult. As you can tell, our numbers are second highest. And having four and a half clerks, it's really untenable to keep up the pace with that. So Linwood has their judge and a full time commissioner who is handling um their photo tickets. Uh, and they are, continue to expand. And I think with the light rail, they're gonna be having more cameras. Um, but yeah, we're just, this is one of those complaints where we're always saying, can we have more? And I know we're always asking for more, but we really are um putting in a lot of effort just trying to keep up with that. And I think that does show the, the level of, of volume. And not every jurisdiction has as many cameras as we do. I know Bothell is growing, um Linwood is, is out. The Kirkland has a lot of parking tickets, so that, a lot of parking. So it's just that, but it's still, you have to have every touch handling those and bring processing money and the cases and docketing. But ours um, looking at Bothell and Linwood are probably more um comparable.
Thank you, Judge.
If I may.
Yeah.
But to that point, though, this isn't necessarily apples to apples in terms of what the courts are doing. Is that correct?
Well, I, I think it is when you're looking at the, the jurisdictions with higher um the higher numbers, even if, if Kirkland is doing parking tickets, they're still handling. Our photo tickets are treated like a parking ticket, so it's still, you're touching a case, so that's why they have the higher number of clerks.
Understand, but there, there also, if they're handling more criminal cases, then um that's not necessarily the same as a parking ticket.
It's a different level. You're correct on that. We only have court the two days a week for the criminal side, but we're handling much higher volume on photo tickets.
Uh, uh, understand, but in terms of the staffing level, there's not necessarily a direct correlation between the number of tickets and the number of staff that a, a jurisdiction might have if they're handling, for example, more criminal cases than parking tickets.
I think, I mean, obviously that's true when you have different staffing that's gonna go into a courtroom. But I think it is apples to apples when you're looking at the number of uh filings. And it is broken down on A O C. They have a caseload summary every month. You can look at every single type of case, it's outlined there. So if you really wanted to drill down and see exactly, it's all, the data is there for you. This is a um synopsis that was put together that shows those numbers that were coming from the state. So if you want to look at how many DUIs are filed, how many property crimes, how many crimes against persons, you can get into that level of detail.
Right, but in terms of the level of effort, there's not necessarily a direct one to one correlation. Meaning.
Well, are you valuing criminal caseload more than the photo tickets?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I, I don't think it's lesser. It's different, but it's still attention to detail. There are different consequences. If you're talking a criminal case, someone may go to jail, someone may not be released, there could be consequences. But also with our photo tickets, people lose their ability to register their vehicle if we don't handle things timely and appropriately. So I think that the standard of care is still very high and detail oriented.
Oh, I'm not disputing the uh standard of care. I'm just asking about in terms of the level of effort required for the the elements. To, to council members, uh Goldman question.
Okay.
We are.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
I, I think it's hard for us to talk about what other cities and their crews and jurisdictions need. I can just talk to what our court needs.
So that's, that's why I'm trying to understand the value of this, is that if we can't talk about what their needs are with this, it's really about what our needs are.
Yeah, so this is a snapshot, so you could just see, and it, I'm giving you data. And then if, go into the next slide, hopefully that would help a little bit in why, just for that picture. And we can certainly circle back if you would like, or continue this conversation right now.
So I'll also step in and say that currently, right now, in the courts, um their FTEs, they only have two individuals, including their court administrator, that actually can support the courtroom. That's next to come as part of this conversation that we're about to have. So in addition, when the judge is in the courtroom, there's only two people. And so if the one actual court clerk that the city has is not able to, to support the courtroom, the city's court administrator then has to support the courtroom. Those are the only two qualified out of the four people that currently are within the department for an F T E count two.
Vice Goldman, do you have another question?
No, no. Understood. No, my, my point isn't that the value of what you do, which is, is, is honorable. It's about the level of effort necessary to perform that and to look at what another jurisdiction does. They may have different needs than what we do. I, I'm just finding it hard to follow it, that this is a justification for your needs. It's what you need to do is really what is the question. Not comparing it to, say, somebody else who has different needs and different requirements.
Let's continue on with the presentation and maybe that will inform the discussion.
Sure. So with that, you know, we're looking at ways that we can be efficient with what we have. How can we loo- look at the staffing that we currently have as well? And, and to answer that to a little bit is, some of the, what you didn't see, I don't know if, can I go back? What you, what you see on the court, very top green clerk slash judicial assistant. That i- is actually a truncated uh field that has actually like, you might have a couple leads, you might have a couple assistants, so there's, but it, it all comes together as uh whoever's supporting the court. So what we've looked at too is what type of staffing do we need to support the workload that's coming in? And a big part of that is experience. And so we've, we've had really great more entry level people that we've been able to bring in, but we haven't been able to attract and retain experienced individuals. And I think a lot of that comes back to our market, especially if you're competing with people that can, and I'm not saying that we can compete with some of our larger uh comps, but if I can get paid more to go do less, I might be tempted to look at that. And so how can we make sure that we're providing at least uh the market rate of what cities around us and jurisdictions around us in our comps are doing? And in that analysis, if we can reclassify one of our current court clerk FTEs to be a senior level, then we can justify paying at a senior level. We have someone currently who does have the ability to s- to support the clerk work uh court work in the court. And that's just one person right now that's trained to do that and has many years of experience that would qualify as a senior judicial specialist. Uh, our, our cur- current court clerks are on their way. But I, I think there's that value in, in the succession planning that we've talked about over the last couple of years too, of how can we support that growth? And not necessarily just have, I'm, I'm very little. I'm, I'm very little on baseball terminology and teams, but I think of the Mariners and how, I feel like they're just training grounds for everyone else. And I, I think that we don't want to be that, where we're, we're training up people and having them now leave, and we want them to be supported and grow. But also, are there ways that we can provide those opportunities at Lake Forest Park? And so the senior judicial specialist is one way that we're hoping we can take the current FTE of what's already classified as a court clerk, but can we make it a senior level? It will allow us to pay at the experience level that we have. And then also with the future FTE, we, right now, we have an additional point five FTE from the tiered approach that was approved by council. When we reach the additional point five, we'd like to reclassify that FTE as a senior. Because I think it will allow us to, again, either if someone is ready internally, great, but if not, we can promote a higher wage, attract hopefully more qualified individuals, and then hopefully be able to lessen the burden on our court administrator, who is the only person at the moment who can come in and support the one individual that can support court. And so there's that trickle-down effect of, we've been able to hire really great people, but I think that we need to be able to retain experience and also hire experience so that our middle management, our higher level positions also have the ability to delegate more and provide that growth to our, our people. And so that's why we're asking to reclassify versus not necessarily ask for additional FTE here, but can we re-figure this a little bit so that we can attract and retain experienced individuals and support those growing needs of the court as well in that process?
Thank you.
I'll keep moving on. Uh, I think I missed, I got everything. Okay. So, oh yeah, let's just, let's just get by, by the HR specialist, you know? But no, we, I just want to go back to, you guys have talked about the climate coordinator, so I didn't want to lose that. I didn't know what the FTE and job description would look like, but it's just noted because I know that those are considerations that council is looking at. And then the HR specialist, just as an update, too. In fall, when this information was presented, there was twenty positions that had been filled over the last twenty years. And so I said, well, let me just look at January until, January twenty-four until now, and that's been fifty-five openings that have been filled. And, and so that's just an update there to just show the work. And, and what you don't see there that I just want to call out is the number of, of touches that you have with candidates. You know, there's hundreds of applications that are being filtered through, phone interviews, IS helping set up all those new hires, payroll, finance specialists setting up our new hires. There's a lot of those behind-the-scenes things that are trickling in. While we're waiting for those positions to be filled, that workload gets dispersed to our other members, our other employees. And so we also have to think about that potential burnout as well. And, you know, we have very hard-working individuals and a really great team, but I think at some point, obviously, you just want to try to support that with additional FTE. We do have multiple retirements, as Director Vaughn, Finance Director Vaughn had talked about. Potentially increased FTE, depending on what the council decides in the future, the management of the collective bargaining agreements, and then just general personnel issues, training, all the things that come with new hires, that you just need to encourage and train, and they just come up. And then right now, it's just a one-point-oh FTE. So I do want to say, though, I'm very thankful to have the temp HR support. That has, that has been really, really great. So thank you, thank you, City Administrator. That's been really, really, really great to have her here for the last couple of months to be able to provide some of that support in those areas. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I have seen a significant difference in the police department because we are a huge, heavy burden on HR for quite a while, and a significant change when we got this point five going. And it has been extremely helpful. I don't want that to be not missed, that it has been huge change for us.
Thank you. Vice Chair Goldman.
Yes, thanks. I was hoping you could clarify something. Could you, or maybe Director Vaughn, compare the financial cost of hiring a temporary HR support person versus hiring a permanent person for the same FTE?
Probably later. I don't want to put you on the spot right now.
Or is the question about ongoing, I, I'm not trying to fill, I'm trying to, is it just a direct? What are we paying for the HR support on a temporary-
Yeah, or maybe I could be free.
Basis?
If we have all of this HR work, and so we have a need to hire a temporary person from month to month, is there an economy of saying, well, let's hire a permanent person, and because of that, we'll know the quality that we're getting for the same cost? Or, like, is, is there a financial benefit to do hiring a point-five permanent person?
I want to circle back to, it was an original budget ask. In the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, it was a original ask to expand the HR department at a point eight. And, and then that was removed as part of the budget cuts because things were so tight.
So just to go back to the FTE, sorry, Phil, really, the administrator, sorry. The FTE is, was asked at a point eight, and then the amount of hours that the temp has been supporting has between point six, seven, five, six, seven, and point eight.
That's true.
So I think to Councilmember Vice Chair Goldman's point is, what is the difference between hiring somebody through Robert Haff and Company for a full year at a part-time versus having somebody on staff? We can get you those numbers. I can tell you that when we have filled in in the finance department with Robert Haff and Company, when we were between accounting supervisors, it is extremely more expensive. And now there are also taxes on top of that service as well that come into play with the changes legislature just adopted. So we can get you those costs. But I would say this is not, and I, I asked Shannon to put this, and I've, I've relayed to council that this is extremely important because several of the things that she's left off this list are also all of the benefits, the, you know, the open enrollment, the schedules of all of our public works and police vehicles, the annual audits that go through. This all falls on the HR director, being our risk manager. So it's, it's more than just HR, and so we will get you those numbers. We'll give you a comparison. I would say, long-term, it would be better to hire somebody because you don't always guarantee that you get to keep the same part-time person from Robert and Haff and Company. But we will get that for you.
Thank you. And I guess, I suppose the point I'm getting at is that we shouldn't be short-sighted, that if we can save money long-term by hiring a city employee, we should consider that it might be an upfront cost, but it'll pay dividends long-term. So that's something we should consider.
Thank you.
Well, just to the previous comment about the sales tax, I mean, that adds, that's a huge amount on top of any temporary costs. So that's just money that happened all of a sudden.
Yeah, that's, it's an excellent point, and, and we don't even know all the ramifications of the new service sales tax.
Well, it'll be the same, the sales tax, I, from what I understand, is, is sales tax. So it's whatever our sales tax rate is, that's what it will be.
Understandably about the rate, but, but the application. I think the other thing, I just really quickly on point, since this is part of proposal from the administration, just to, Director Moore's comment about the, the, it's not just this discrete position or HR. In the absence of this additional support, other departments are having to pick up, like, the PD, finance, they're having to do, and courts having to do some of the additional legwork, which makes, it's, it's a trickle-down effect, and it, 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 it's a very tight-knit group here. The same time, having that additional support that allows us to make sure that, that the, the risks are mitigated and, and monitored, and that there aren't things that are falling through the cracks, and making sure that all the things are taken care of. And it is, it is really essential that we, we keep moving forward with, every city is having tremendous number, every municipality, county, et cetera. And they're having high turnovers. And if we're not competitive by being able to attract the right people, allowing our HR director and our, our team to, to attract the, the best possible people we can, we're at a disadvantage, and we're going to continue to see additional turnover. Fifty-five position in, in nearly two years is unprecedented. And we need to make sure that we are able to keep some stability going here. So I'll leave it there, but other questions, counsel, before we get back? Yes, Councilor Ruhl.
Well, I don't know. I, I'm, I guess I just, less of a question. I just want to recognize that, you know, having a department of one makes it hard for that person to take vacations and actually spend time away from this space. And I think in addition to actually having somebody who can do the work, having somebody be able to step away from the work is equally important.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, colleagues? Please continue, Director Moore.
It's, it's not noted in the piece here, but I guess as another consideration, if council wasn't comfortable with a fully, sorry, I know I'm probably going off script here, City Administrator, with a regular, at least, consideration of a limited-term employee would be something maybe to consider or look into. Because what's difficult with a part-time temp is I'm only able to give a fraction of the, the work because it's really on a month-to-month renewal cycle, where if there's at least an extended amount of time, that would, I think, allow for an ability to offload a few of the additional projects that are longer term.
Director Moore?
Oh.
Colleagues, any other questions for Director Moore? Again, we're-
I'm sorry, Phil, or Matt, I need to go back. I mean, you don't need to see it, but the other piece of the slide is just the title changes. So the court clerk judicial specialist would be what we're proposing for a title change to just be more in line with industry. I think the court clerk is becoming a little bit more outdated. And then our accounting supervisor changing that job title to finance manager so that it better describes the work, and there's no market adjustment that's being put without as well, just the title change.
Hey, colleagues, questions? I think, Councilor McCartney, do you have any questions? You're the last one online.
The last standing one. No, I just, I, I do appreciate your comments, Director Moore. You know, even your, your baseball analogy, I think being training ground is difficult and, and having a shifting environment all the time really probably limits what you're able to offload, which the whole idea is to have you be able to offload some meaningful tasks. So thanks for your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Ruhl.
Since we're off script, if you were, if we were to work with a limited term, what would you, what would be helpful for you to have a person for twenty-twenty-six or twenty-six and twenty-seven? Like, what would be a helpful?
At least a year. I mean, we have retirements that are set up here for, I, I know the coming year, and knowing what those recruitment processes will look like, it trickles down to the promotional processes for PD. And I think that I also want to defer to City Administrator. I'll take what I can get. I will, I will put it that way.
I just wanted to make, make the point that if it's an LTE, it has, each biennium has to be re-approved by council. And so you would only be approving it for twenty-twenty-six, but then we would have the discussion again next fall for the upcoming biennium to see where the workload stands, what we know, to show. We, when I first got here, our associate planner was an LTE because council wasn't sure that there was continuous workload. There obviously was, and that is now an FTE.
Vice Chair Goldman.
Yeah, so pulling from my experience in the academic world, there's a, it's called visiting assistant professor. Basically, it's a one-year, you're there, so you're more than an adjunct, but you're less than a full-time faculty member. And there's pros and cons. The pro is that the person, you know you're there for a year, you're not term-to-term. Drawback is almost as soon as you start, like, three months in, you're starting to apply to jobs at other places. And so is it similar in the government sphere? Where, like, is that a drawback of, if we hire someone for one year, they're going to have one foot out the door halfway in?
Depending on who you hire, if someone is looking for a permanent position, they are going to continue to do that. I don't know if you are lucky enough to hire someone that says, yeah, I just want something for a little bit. Great. So yes, I, I'd say it's a risk.
Questions? Councilor Ruhl, leave it.
Director Moore, thank you for the presentation. It was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your questions. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody. Colleagues, these are things you'll be ruminating on here over the coming days. And if you have questions for Director Vaughn, or Director Moore, myself, or Administrator Hill, staff, we can certainly accommodate whatever you need.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this is obviously the first touch, and then planning to bring it all back on at the next meeting. And in addition with the property tax, bring that all forward.
Okay.
At the next special meeting.
Yes, Councilor Ruhl.
And then in our packet, we had some of the more traditional-
Yes.
And some of them were blank. Was that just because we didn't have the, the numbers yet? Or was that just because the system just ignored it?
I would have to specifically look at what you're looking at. Yeah, which-
Surface Water Operation Fund 403, I thought we had something there, but maybe we didn't. So just a question.
I'm sorry, the surface water?
Actually, well, okay, so the, the first place I saw was Information Technology Fund 502. Because we do call out the transfer in from General Fund, but there's no transfer in.
Yeah, there, there was not a transfer.
Don't have that yet?
Yet, no, that, there was not, there is not a transfer in. The, the number is zero.
Presented, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, just, thank you. That's it. So I had-
But thank you for the, yeah, noted on the clarification, and maybe we just remove it for the next round, to remove that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Vaughn and Director Moore, really, really appreciate it. Gosh, oh, here we are. We are moving on to ten D. There we go. Resolution twenty-five, twenty forty-one, declaring certain vehicles as surplus property and authorizing their sale, public auction, or by direct sale. This seems perfunctory. Let's get her done.
Yes, let's get her done. So we, the Police Department and the Public Works Department have taken delivery of the vehicles. They were, almost all the vehicles that they're purchasing, they still have a, I believe, a Silverado we're waiting for in the Public Works Department. The Police Department has taken delivery of their new patrol vehicles, as well as the new transport van. It's out getting its final touches put on. And so what we need to do is declare the following vehicles as surplus. We use the services of James G. Murphy and Company in Marysville, when we sell surplus property. They have a ten percent commission plus any necessary moving costs. I've reported to you in the past, and it's not on here because it's already been declared surplus, but the old dump truck is not roadworthy, and so they will be transporting that for us. Thought they were going to tow it, but I guess they're going to take the liability and drive it, so, but we're not going to put one of our people in it. Surplus vehicles for this evening are P-ten, which is a police patrol vehicle. It's a twenty-fifteen Ford Explorer. Fifty-five hundred is the minimum value that James G. Murphy thinks will get out of that. Five-twelve is the Econoline van, forty-five hundred dollars. And then E-O-one, the thousand dollars is the Ford Explorer that we had been loaning to NEMCO. It died. Its engine is shot. It will not be repaired. It's not worth the value. And so that's the minimum value they gave us. I think we'll get a little more than that for parts and scrap, but we will see. We had two other vehicles that we were going to declare surplus, P-twelve and P-fourteen former patrol vehicles. We are going to retain P-twelve as the NEMCO vehicle. And then we have, the chief has gotten a lot of feedback that our SWAT officer needs a vehicle to take home. He lives in Snohomish County, gets a call out, this Snohomish County has to drive here, get his vehicle, and then go back up to Snohomish County. That's not an efficient way to run a SWAT team. And so we would take those two vehicles, so you're losing about ten thousand dollars in trade-in value or auction value. But they will serve that purpose. Both of those vehicles will be retained as ownership by the city. We have upcoming in December, talking about a one-year extension to the NEMCO ILA as we continue to- As we continue to negotiate that and bring potentially bringing in Shoreline. And so as those changes occur, we will own that vehicle, whatever we negotiate as far as vehicles for N M Co. And N M Co pays for, we then bring that back in and surplus added future date. So as you know, the net proceeds from sales go back into the fleet fund. They're tracked separately because police vehicles are bought with general fund, public works vehicles are bought with a mix of funds and. The two shall not intertwine. Do you have any questions for me? And we are asking for action tonight.
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill? This is pretty, pretty straightforward.
Pretty. What would be the timeline on this um being?
The auction?
Yeah.
We're driving in there next week.
There you go. Thank you.
I don't have an exact date from the chief, but I hear I get to drive the old Jeep Cherokee, which I've I may die into.
That the Cherokee is like a Flintstone car.
There's actually interest I've heard, so.
Yeah, um, Vice Chair Goldman.
Um, might be that I was a bit confused by this. So you mentioned the dump truck.
I don't. That that was.
Was that declared?
That was in a previous.
Okay, no, my question.
That's already been, we've had several vehicles declared surplus. We're taking them all at the same time, I'm putting them in the same lot. So, but yeah, the dump truck has previously been declared surplus.
Okay, thanks.
Colleagues, what's your pleasure? I didn't get a motion for adoption of resolution twenty four, excuse me. Where am I here?
Are we at?
There we go, twenty five, two zero, four, one.
I will move resolution twenty five dash twenty forty one, declaring certain vehicles as surplus.
Second.
Moving second to adopt resolution twenty five, two zero, four, one, declaring certain vehicles as surplus property and authorizing their sale at public auction or by direct sale. Any questions or comments?
Uh, just um, do we need to have a three touch roll?
This is the third touch.
Or is there a touch? Thank you.
Yeah, at least a third touch.
Just checking.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lee. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor of adoption of resolution twenty five, two zero, four, one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council. We need a room in the parking lot, don't we? Chief and Administrator Hill. Uh, okay, uh, this is a very important one, last but not least, uh, tonight, resolution twenty five, two zero, four, four. Authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Lake Forest Park and Teamsters Local Number One One Seven. Representing our maintenance workers. And we preface this by saying, as you know, colleagues, this is always a huge lift, um, these various contracts. And the staff does a tremendous job um in working through these and we thank them very much for this. It's a lot of work. Please, Director Moore.
Hi, hello again, uh, H R Director Moore. And so we're bringing to you the uh collective bargaining agreement between Teamsters and the city. Uh, the council has had the opportunity for us to bring this to you. Uh, number of times in October, December and June, as well as September. And then what we are asking is that the council will approve the resolution. Uh, if it is declined, then we could continue the bargaining process with the parties. But would likely face an allegation of unfair labor practice. Uh, the Teamster group met on the twenty fourth of October and voted to approve it as well. And then uh in terms of the three year contract, it would provide for uh three percent wage increase. Effective January one, twenty twenty five, and that would be retro plus a three percent market adjustment. And then effective December one of twenty twenty five, a one point five market adjustment. In January one of twenty twenty six, looking at a hundred percent of the C P I, which we know what that is. So that would be the total of a three point five percent. And then in twenty twenty seven, a maximum of two percent plus one percent market adjustment. There's been a few um changes to the weekly standby daily allowance, increasing that by about fifteen dollars. On each of those items and then the monthly employee premium sharing did increase the employee responsibility share. I'm missing something.
Mr. Goldman.
I would just add that um. Thanks to Director Moore, um, John Lee, our legal staff um from Summit, as well as Director Vaughn um from Finance. Um, as you said, it's a huge lift. Um, this actually went eleven months longer than it should have. This should have been finished last year in time for this year's budget. So um to earlier discussion of the increased costs in legal, um, that was to support that through mediation. We are happy to have come to resolution with Teamsters. Um, they're very important to us. And so we can move forward with this and then just the last note we did, this was completely done within the bargaining authority that was given by the council. So there were no additional asks.
Thank you.
Uh, just a quick reminder of executive session rules. Those things are not discussed here, so. Um, any questions or comment for Director Moore? Vice Chair Goldman, Councilmember.
Not a question. I just wanted to offer my gratitude to the uh bargaining team. Um, I know you you got this done, plus the police guild. That's a lot of to do two of these agreements in one year. So thank you for your hard work.
No problem.
And I have to say, I'm sorry, I left out Director Dickinson, Director Dickinson. So she was very involved as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilmember Riddle was my voice here.
Just to clarify that we are seeing this contract represented. As salaries Teamsters on the budget adjustment. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. There was no total dollar amount. I want to make sure I knew what was happening. Other than that, I don't have any concerns.
Colleagues, any other questions? Councilmember McCartney. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Moore. Um. Vice Chair Goldman.
I will go ahead and move resolution twenty five dash twenty forty four, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Lake Forest Park and Teamsters Local One Seventeen.
Second.
Moving second to um. Prove resolution, adopt resolution twenty five, two zero, four, four, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Lake Forest Park and Teamsters Local Number One One Seven. Any questions or comments? All those of favor, yes, please.
Continued appreciation for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days, the ayes have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Many thanks to the team and a big thanks to our friends at the Teamsters. They are very valuable employees, um, and we really appreciate all they do for our community. So uh, the road may have been long, pun intended, but we got there. So. All right, um. Are there any other items of business? Um, just a gentle reminder about the future schedule. Take a look at it below. Um, just to make sure that you're well versed in that. Um, council. Start with council committee reports. We had any council meeting, committee meetings? We have not recently. How about council member reports? Wow. Yes.
Uh, two quickies. Uh, the tree board met. Um, one thing they're planning for next year is a tree giveaway. Um, our neighboring cities, uh, Shoreline has done this, Kenmore's done this. Um, they're debating about whether it would be around Arbor Day in early spring or around September. Um, both are good tree planting months, uh, and so for figuring out the details of how many trees, what species, that sort of thing. Uh, Seashore met last week. We got updates on the Revive I five project and an update up from Sound Transit on their twenty twenty six work plan, or sorry, service revisions. This is totally separate from the B R T project, though I did um vent a bit about um to Sound Transit and Metro. That in my opinion, they're selling us short in terms of service levels. That the service revisions are going to cut our service significantly. So I think that's something for us to be mindful of.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Goldman. Any other? Director Hoffman.
Uh, with Tracy having to sign off, I feel he would find it important to mention the C A C met on. Whatever month this is on the fifth. Uh, and had a a, an agenda item to to discuss their path forward. In that discussion, they unanimously voted to recommend disbanding to the mayor and council. In their mind, they're done. Um, lots of thanks to them. Yes. Um, there will be an opportunity, but the unclear issue. And I, and I don't know when Tracy intends to address it is how to officially disband them. Okay, I just wanted to bring that up for the council.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. That's important and we do appreciate their work very much.
I believe that would require cake.
Our fro yo.
Oh, there you go.
Um, any other council member reports? Uh, just quickly, mayor's report, um. The. Culvert is in place. It just in time for some pretty decent rains. Um, and I came back from California yesterday and. Dragged my, not literally dragged, drove my family across it. Um, I had to choose my words carefully on the dice currently. Um, it it looks great. There's still a lot of additional work. I know that um the chief and. Um, Director Dickinson are breathing a huge sigh of relief as we all are. Um, huge thanks to the P D and and public works for helping. Um, facilitate some shortcomings on the part of Wash Dot and their contractor. Um, kept everybody safe. I drove up there three or four or five times every day. And I don't think there was a single time I did not see one of our. Um, officers patrolling that area. And I know the neighbors who I've spoken with deeply appreciate it. So um, it was, I wouldn't say it was a nothing burger, that project, but we came. Cross it relatively unscathed and I hope chief you are feeling the same way. So big thanks to you guys. Really appreciate that. Um, I received a call when I was in California from um executive elect. Zylee's uh chief of staff uh to join their transition committee and I had the first meeting with the team today. Um, very exciting work that they they're looking at. Um, they very, they've assembled a very robust team for the transition for. The new chief, the chief executive elect, um, as you know, he will take office when the election certified on November twenty fifth. Uh, Governor Inslee was there, um, Brad Smith, President of Microsoft, um, Doug Baldwin, former Seahawks. Um, Hall of Famer. Um, uh, and we had some very robust discussions about needs within. Um. King County and how to help lift everyone up, given economic realities of um. The county as well as as uh the economy. And one of the themes that did rise to the top in our breakout session with a number of people, a number of twenty, twenty odd people. Was the need for coordination between the county and the cities. And I believe. Um, there is a very, very strong commitment from everybody in in that group. Uh, today that that's essential. And so, and I know Jeremiah has that top of mind. He's got um, uh, some really great ideas for for the region and um for help. Helping solve some problems and recognizes that we have to all be engaged to help. Um, we can't do it alone. So it's very exciting work and uh look forward to many things that the group. Um, is his administrative team that he assembles over the coming weeks uh gets done in in the coming years. So um, city administrators report anything to? Nothing, nothing to see there. Well, that I. I thought we were going to go to ten, so you guys want to stay around for a few more minutes or will we? Okay. Councilman Riddle.
I have heard uh some folks wanting to know what kind of planting will be going up around the one oh four when it's completed. So if we could get together.
You bet.
And share that with the community. That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Bye bye.
Good night, councilmember.